I'd like to call the Anacortes City Council meeting for January 25th, 2021 to order. Ms. Hunt, would you take the role?
Mr. Carter?
President.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Mr. Walters?
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath? Ms. Moulton? It sounds like Planning Commission may not be here yet, Planning Committee. Mr. McDougall?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
And Christine's here, she was just muted.
I'm here.
Mayor Gere?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton indicated that she is without internet connectivity and would like to be excused.
Okay.
Continue.
We have a motion by Mr. Walters and second by Mr. Young. All in favor of excusing Ms. Moulton, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay. So, we're going to get on to announcements and committee reports. First of all, I'd like to say that on Item 5C, I need to remove from the agenda this evening. It's not ready for prime time this evening. We'll bring it back, I believe, next week. All right, so under announcements and committee reports, I have my weekly COVID-19 update. And as of today, Island Hospital, over the course of the pandemic, has tested 11,278 people. They've had 231 positive cases from those testings, and they have admitted 39 people to the hospital. And we've had no fatalities in Anacortes. As of today, according to the Skagit County Health Department, in the 98221 ZIP code, there are 327 current positive COVID cases. There are also, there were 78 new cases over the weekend in Skagit County, which puts us at about 326 for 100,000 residents to date. So now I'm going to jump to the vaccine doses. And there are, there has been 6,086 doses given in Skagit County to date. And that's through the Skagit County Public Health, through the hospital, the pharmacies, the different entities in the county. And every week, of course, whenever we get our new allocations of vaccines, they'll continue to do that. At Island Hospital, all vaccine appointments are full at this time. But they will open up scheduling again this Wednesday, January 27th, at noon. And you do this online. This is in order to keep the hospital lines open for emergencies and patients needing to see their providers. So if you do go to the website at noon on Wednesday, be ready to go with your information. Last week, in 22 minutes, they filled 600 appointments. So you have to be ready to go, or you will miss out. That went really well, and they're going to continue. And if they get more doses, they can up the amount of appointments they can have. But at this point, that's what they're doing. Currently, we're still on Phase 1A. Oh, this is for vaccines. This is where the phases get confusing. For vaccines, you're eligible if you are in Phase 1A Tier 1 and 2, or Phase 1B Tier 1. And that includes the following: high-risk workers in the healthcare setting, high-risk first responders, residents and staff of nursing homes in assisted living or other community-based congregant living settings, where most individuals are over the age of 65. All other workers in the healthcare setting, and all people 65 years of age and older, and people 50 years and older that are living in multi-generational, meaning more than one generation. So grandparents or grandkids in a household, that type of situation. In Washington State, we've had, we have had over 300,000 cases of COVID, and we've had 4,114 deaths. As far as moving, now we're getting into phases about COVID, not vaccines, about the disease itself. To go forward from Phase 1 to 2, and we presently are all in Phase 1, you need to meet all four of these metrics. 10% of decreasing trend and a two-week rate of COVID-19 cases for 100,000 population. And we currently have an 89% increase trend going on. You also have to meet the metric of an over 10% decreasing trend in two-week rate for new COVID hospital admission rates per 100,000. And we are currently at 50% increasing rate, or trend. ICU occupancy has to be less than 90%, and we're at 60%. And COVID-19 test positivity rate has to be less than 10%, and we're at 8%. So in our four-county region, the North Region, we're meeting two of the four metrics. In the United States, we now are sitting at over 25.3 million cases of COVID, and we've had 420 deaths to date, 420,000 deaths per date. Worldwide, we have had 99.6 million confirmed cases of COVID-19 with a little over 2 million deaths, and that was reported by the World Health Organization. So that is my COVID-19 update for this evening. I'm going to stop here for just a moment, and I'm going to introduce you to someone that has joined us. And this gentleman is Mike Gans, he's our interim fire chief. And Mike Gans has joined us. And Mike, do you want to say anything to the council this evening? Or just wave hello? And you're muted. Mike's first day was today.
How about now?
Chief Gans's first day was today. Yes, we can hear you, Chief Gans.
Okay, sounds good. Well, hello, and thanks for giving me the opportunity to help out. And I had a good day today, meeting a lot of people, and I look forward to meeting a lot more. And so I'm just excited for the opportunity to come in and help out.
Okay. So normally, Chief Gans, department heads, they turn their video off unless they're presenting to the council. But I'm glad you turned it on, now we know who you are. No, it's all good, it's perfect, it's perfect timing. So, anyway, welcome to the city, we're thrilled you're here.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Item 2B is our Planning Committee report.
Yeah, Mayor Gere, I'm happy to do a little quick one for you. So at our Planning Committee, we just finished up. We had Mr. Meesmer, we had the interim chief prior, Mr. Kennedy, and then Ryan and myself, Carolyn's obviously gone. We talked a little bit about the building code update and also the fire element, sprinkler element too, which I think we're going to go over today. The main thing is, is the fact that we thought there was going to be an extension until July to adopt, but the governor decided to overturn that and wants everything adopted by February 1st. So that's why it's back on right now. We talked a little bit about some examples of challenges with kind of reasonable use and buffers that are with our current critical area ordinance that are, were good examples that we're trying to work through to make sure that our, the CAO that we're working on right now, addresses, so it's more clear for the public and any applicant to understand kind of where they fit, and kind of mitigating for buffer and proposed code and permitting alterations, and kind of how certain projects or individual development would go through, for example, a garage. So that was kind of nice to have some examples brought forward for us to kind of hash through for our next critical area ordinance. We talked a little bit about some of the bills at the state level that might impact housing also. But beyond that, I think we're going to probably cover it in our presentation later on in the agenda. Changing hats, we did have an impromptu library committee meeting. And so if it's okay, I will do an update on that.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so Mr. Young, Mr. McDougall, Director Vogel, and then we also had a guest, Elise, Ms. Fleming was there, Alethea, who's the library president of the board. And so we just kind of talked a little bit about their approach to Phase 2, when we get there, and taking a moment to kind of figure out the best path forward to continue to serve the public most efficiently. And so he just wanted to kind of explain the story of what's been happening this last year. They've done a very good job with their curbside. They've had about 8,000 kind of curbside meets, and that's about 30,000 items that have gone out during COVID with the library closed. And then they've also done an incredible amount of online programming for both children and adults, and they've had about 70,000 views online. So, you know, they want to make sure that though some positions have been cut with our 2021 budget, which was necessary, that they're continuing to really utilize their staff and understand that things might have to kind of change as we have a partial opening or a full opening. So, and making sure that that story is told. So, one of those things is that we really encourage them. They haven't, the library hasn't had actually a committee on council to kind of come to and voice their concerns and what's going on with them, and as an advisory committee. And so we encourage them, maybe in the first quarter of this year, to come and kind of tell their story and what they've been doing so far. I think it's really interesting and how they're budgeting for books with their used bookstore that's volunteer-based, right? That's really where they get a lot of their new inventory from. So, I just think that it was a really good meeting and also kind of hashing out maybe what, they're going to have to be creative about how open the library is to the public in Phase 2. Maybe it's only a few days, maybe it's only a few hours a day, so that they can continue to serve that curbside. And it's pretty complicated, a lot more complicated than even a grocery store, right? And so what that looks like. So we just really encourage them to make sure to do whatever they do, do it so that they can sustain themselves and serve the group, the greater population. And that we don't expect them to go 100% day one on Phase 2. So, I think that's it, if anyone has anything else to add.
Mayor Gere?
Yes, Mr. Young?
No, just to echo what Ms. Cleland McGrath stated, but it really was a great meeting from the standpoint that we had an honest, frank conversation about the desires of the library to do the services that they are, how important they are, and just the work that they're doing in order to, going through checking books, putting them someplace to be cleaned or reserved for a few hours, you know, to make sure that there's nothing involved with COVID associated with it, to put it back. And so it's labor-intensive, and they just really wanted to make sure that they were heard, and we have, and we did. And, you know, to commend my council members, I thought that they did a great job of explaining where we are as a budget, but the opportunities there going forward. And so I just really wanted to commend them for that. If I might, Mayor Gere, continue on to that, the fact that the TPA Advisory Board, the Tourism Advisory Board, I wanted to give a report on that. We met on Wednesday of last week. And as I stated, Kristin Kelch is the president. What happened was, we approved the 2021 work plan, which was necessary to present to the county commissioners for approval. And what is in that is that we've decided to engage E-DAS for the first year to pull together all the legal, the accounting, the hiring, and moving into place so we can form the Tourism Bureau. But we needed to contract with an entity in order to bring that forward. So it's a lot of work happening right about now. It's, the board is doing a tremendous job. And keep in mind, it won't be before March 1st that any of the funds from the hotel motel tax will arrive to the Tourism Board. So the plan is there, and we're working through that right now diligently. The hope is to be as frugal as possible, but also at the same time, recognize that in times of COVID, you know, we've got to be so strategic in trying to restart, if you would, our economy. So I just wanted to put that out. But lots of work is coming and going forward, and I just wanted to update not only council and you, but also the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Okay, are there any other council announcements at this time? Okay, then we'll move on to Item 3, which is our public comment. If there's any member of the public that would like to talk to the council at this time, please raise your hand, and I'll call on you. Okay, I don't see anyone with their hand up. So we'll move on then to Item 4, our consent agenda. Has our minutes of January 19th, our approval of claims in the amount of $31,635, or $31,635,000, excuse me, $635. Contract mod for 32nd and M intersection design work. And Item 4D, Resolution 3015, authorizing the signature and the execution of MOU to the collective bargaining agreement between the city and the Teamsters Local 231.
Mayor Gere?
Mr. McDougall?
I move we approve Items A through D on the consent agenda.
A through D? Yep.
Sorry?
Okay.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Young. We have a motion by Mr. McDougall, a second by Mr. Young. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign, motion carries. Now we're under Other Business, Item 5A, which is Ordinance 3081, updating the international building code to the 2018 version. This is a discussion with possible action this evening. Mr. Meesmer?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council and the audience. The adoption of Ordinance 3081 would amend AMC Chapter 1914, adopting the current international 2018 codes with the state amendments consistent with the state Building Code Council. The anticipated effective date was July 1, 2020. Then it got moved off to November 2020. Then it got moved off to February 1, 2021. And then the state Building Code Council said, no, we're going to delay this until July. On January 18th, Governor Inslee distributed a letter to all of us and to the state Building Code Council repealing the state Building Code Council's delay of adoption of building codes. And so now, they need to be adopted by February 1, 2021. So that's why I'm here tonight. We first, the first read on this was January 11th, the city council meeting. At that meeting, we talked about several different things. One of them being a proposed local amendment to require a sprinkler system in all structures 3,600 square feet or larger. After that discussion and further discussion with the Planning Committee, I amended the ordinance to propose 4,800 square feet for a requirement of an automatic sprinkler system in all structures of that size or larger. And so a couple of things in the ordinance that I just also wanted to bring to your attention. In years past, the Board of Adjustment was the Appeal Hearings Board, as well as that one which would look at alternative materials, et cetera. We've changed this consistently with Title 19 in the ordinance, that the hearings examiner would hear appeals of the building code and/or alternative materials and method. There is also one area on the front page of the ordinance that indicated the January 11th meeting. I changed that to January 25th, and that was uploaded this afternoon by Ms. Hunt, so that that's the current and accurate ordinance. So with that, Mayor, I think perhaps it would be good to have a little bit of a conversation about the automatic fire sprinkler system. We have a couple of options. It is imperative that we adopt the building codes. The fire sprinkler system can be withdrawn from the ordinance and then added after further discussion at a later date. Or if the council is so inclined to adopt that this evening, that's acceptable as well. I believe Mr. Kennedy is on the Zoom call as well. And I think perhaps Mr. Kennedy would like to say a few words about the reasoning for the fire sprinkler system. One thing for us to think about is that fire sprinkler systems protect structures long enough to help the individuals get out of the structures and can save lives. There's no doubt about that. But I think, my opinion is that it bears thought about why are we proposing the sprinkler? The reason for proposing the sprinkler is because of our staffing levels. Right now, as I understand it, our staffing levels are below the levels of service that are set out by our comprehensive plan. And so I think Mr. Kennedy can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe, as I understand it, five more firemen are needed to fulfill the level of service that's been adopted by our comprehensive plan. So with that, maybe Mr. Kennedy would like to speak a little bit about the fire sprinkler system?
Me, sir, thank you. Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So again, when we proposed this on the 11th, this was in an effort to provide for life safety. Currently, when we respond to a call, we have two people on shift at the station, and we have to either pick the ambulance or the engine to respond. And when we get a fire call, we will have the staff at the station respond in the engine and get on scene. For us to legally provide an entry into that home, we have what's called the two-in, two-out rule. And for, if we have two people that are going in, we have to have two people on the outside on standby in case something goes wrong. There is an exception that's allowed by state law, and that is the two-in, one-out rule, where in the case of an imminent rescue, which is clearly defined, as we know for a fact, there is somebody inside that building that we can potentially save a life. And it is, we have to have somebody on scene telling us, yes, there's somebody in there, for sure, I know there is. It's not just getting on scene. We see a car in the driving, in the parking lot, and we assume there's somebody in there, that would not qualify. So again, I agree with the council members, and we've had a long discussion in the last two Planning Committee meetings, that this is more of a staffing issue, although our efforts to address that in the past have not been successful due to overall city budgeting purposes. And so what the thought process was here was to provide sprinklers in more homes and businesses so that even though we may lose the building, we can at least give them time to get out safely and not lose any lives. Again, the staffing is an overriding issue. We do not need our comprehensive plan for that, where we could muster an effective firefighting force in a timely manner, as we have adopted. And the key to this is to be able to provide imminent rescue when we get the first engine on scene.
Mayor Gere?
Very excited to hear it, though.
Mr. Young?
Just, you know, follow-up question. Mr. Kennedy, I absolutely understand that, and I agree wholeheartedly. I know that our first goal is to save lives, and that's, you know, part of our whole function. And the challenge I have in understanding how to move forward with this is that unless we are retroactively requiring sprinkler systems, this is only going to affect new buildings going forward. And so then the question becomes, how many of those will, you know, will be able to be rescued? I think we still have, my point is, we still have a problem if we don't have the staffing. And if in this requirement, if we're not going for the two-in, one-out rule, we still are not going to be able to address this issue until long in the future, when we build larger buildings at 4,800 square feet. The real problem is what we have now, and how can we address that now with public safety? And so I'm still not sure if this is the best path for going forward. But I'm open, you know, to any of the other council's opinion. But again, my point is, this is going forward rather than the mass of buildings and structures we have right now. If the issue is rescuing people, this won't address that. It will only address those things to come.
I absolutely agree with you 100%. And the real issue is our staffing. And if we could address that in a timely manner, then I think that we could not even have to address this in the codes at this time.
Mayor Gere?
Mr. Carter?
I just wanted to echo a little bit of what Mr. Young was saying. Is, my understanding, our new construction buildings are better equipped with better materials for fire suppressants, like the drywall and insulation than buildings built 20 years ago, 100 years ago. And since this is only for new construction, I don't know that how helpful it is with newer construction versus the buildings that are 100 years old. Moving forward, it, I don't know how to put in words, but it, you know, it's only helping the new buildings, which are already built better to withstand fire.
You are correct.
That's, you know, boils down to more of a personnel.
Yes, you are correct in the assumption that we do have better building codes in the structures. However, that is only half of what we have to deal with. The other thing is, especially with our society, as we have changed the types of materials that we put inside those structures. And when we get more of the plastics and the petroleum base, they burn so much different than what the older buildings and contents of those buildings burned 50, 60, 70 years ago. And one of the biggest things that we get is the acrid black smoke that comes off the petrochemical products of combustion versus the old natural products, you know, 50, 60 years ago. So yes, while the structures that are built now will withstand more, it also makes it more important that we get in in a timely manner because of the types of materials that we are actually putting in these businesses and residences. But it gets back to exactly what Mr. Young said, is it is more of a staffing problem. And if we can address that, that would be more bang for our buck moving forward. And if we, if we enacted this ordinance, you're right, moving forward, it would take several years before we could show a real benefit.
I like that answer, thank you. Mayor Gere?
Yes, Mr. Miller?
Yeah, again, we've been challenged with staffing at the Anacortes Fire Department for a long time when it comes to structure fire response. And so I state that because I actually, besides some other issues that I'll get to about implementing this ordinance, I'm kind of more supportive of this sprinkler requirement. Just because the reality is, the years are going to go by before we solve the staffing problem. We made, we made some attempts to do it with maybe improving response time, things that the fire department does internally for response time, mutual aid agreements, and trying to have a volunteer program. Things to try to improve the odds of having at least three firefighters ready to show up at the scene. You know, that's the big thing, for imminent rescue. Four is ideal, the numbers go up, the numbers go up substantially. And Chief Kennedy's talked about those at length. But I just wanted to say, I'm somewhat more supportive of this, just to take kind of a little bit of a counterargument rather than solving the staffing problem. I know it's going to continue to be a challenge in the future, and this might not be a bad, you know, which is why it was brought by our staff. It might not be a bad way to go. But I do have some questions about, for Mr. Meesmer, about what is the implication of not, not following the state? You know, like if we don't adopt this by February 1st, does the state come and fine us? Are all buildings that are built with that not in compliance with state code? Help me out, understand what I thought was a very reasonable solution to not only pandemic, but also that was a July, a July 1? pandemic, but also that was a July, a July 1st implementation date seemed very reasonable. And I think all the council was kind of on board with that, and now the state's overriding and saying implement this thing next week. Help me understand the implications and, and what happens if we don't adopt it?
So I've never seen the state fine us, but usually what would happen is they'd send you a letter to let you know that you're in noncompliance with the state building code amendments that have been adopted. Additionally, there's a chance that we would not be eligible for any grants because we're not following the state guidelines.
Yeah, no, that, that, that definitely helps me out a lot. And then my final question, I think, did we get any comments from builders from the last time we, we discussed this subject?
Great question, Mr. Miller. So I had a couple of contacts from builders. Quantum Construction was concerned about the fire sprinkler, automatic fire sprinkler system requirements, and that they felt that it would drive commercial business out of town. The other I got was a comment in regards to the new energy code. The new energy code is, has become very strict, basically driving people away from fossil fuels. So you won't see as many gas furnaces, you'll be seeing heat pumps.
But, but just on that energy code, that's not it, you, you're the only thing that we've added as the city is the sprinkler requirement. Those other, is there anything that I've missed? Because I've read through it a couple of times. Did I miss that as something that we've added? Or is those state requirements that?
Those are state requirements, Mr. Miller.
Okay, thank you.
As you're correct, the only thing we've proposed is the fire sprinkler system.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Young?
Yeah, I think, thank you, Mr. Miller, for that question line. It really cleared up a lot. I'm absolutely okay with going forward with this piece, but I wanted to add an additional point. I had, I was reached out to by several groups, a couple of contractors, and some people whom were part of the fire department. They were volunteers for quite a while. And so it was an enlightening conversation. I do think, though, that given, if I'm correct, we no longer really have a volunteer fire, volunteers in the fire department? And, and I think that that's a, a big issue for us. And I think that that's something we need to begin to, or look into, how we begin to address it, whether there are constraints, or is there a way that we can continue to use that service? Because at the end of the day, it costs lots of money for staffing, but also it really impedes the type of service that we do. I think this conversation we're having right now is about staffing. And I believe that part of that issue we would not be having if we still had some of the volunteers. And I think that that's an issue we really need to talk about, look into, figure out how we can do that and rebuild that. Because at one point, I understand that it was doing some good work with the city, and I think that that's something we really need to look at. I got an earful on both sides of that. So I do think that that's an issue as council, or even mayor as part of the team, need to really look in and see how we can make that happen.
Thank you.
Other comments?
Yeah, Mayor Gear?
Ms. Cleveland and then Mr. Walters?
Yeah, thank you. A couple of items, you know, I, I did hear from some, some individual builders and, and groups such as that about concern if this was really addressing the issue or, or really driving up additional costs for construction when we're, when we're concerned about affordable housing and just housing in general and how much it costs. And so, you know, ideally, a sprinkler in every new structure would be wonderful. But if we have to identify what our issue is and then try to address that issue, and, and to me, it seems like this is more of a staffing issue. So, so I have heard back from quite a few constituents in that manner of concern of ongoing costs, both from builders and then also from, from business owners who require those larger buildings and what it'll take to do that, the required maintenance. And if that's really the best path moving forward. I think that I, I've been lucky enough to have some really good conversations in committee with Mr. Kennedy. And so he, and he can articulate this better, but, you know, there is a, there is a, a level of standard that is required by firefighting community. And regardless of if we have that adopted, which we do, in our, our plan for the city, you know, we're still held to that if something were to go wrong and we can't perform at that level. And, and it has to do with having so, you know, 12 firefighters within nine minutes, 90% of the time. And so that is something that will still hang over us, even if we don't, even if we were to do the sprinkler system, it's something we're still going to have to address. My other thing is, is that, and I think that Mr. Kennedy can better articulate it, is the fact that it's moving to, my, my concern is, when you, when you talk about sprinklers in those commercial buildings and the larger residential buildings, you know, that serves such a small portion of our community in those new, that, that new construction, that are we really using our best ideas when in reality, having three man teams, having those additional five positions, while, yes, incredibly expensive, and it's kind of jaw dropping to think about when we talk benefits and whatnot. But those are, those three man teams, that additional five people will have such a daily impact on our community because the majority of our calls are medic, and, and he can explain how that can help on a daily basis, all of our community members versus just those new construction with sprinkler systems. And then also a little bit, you know, you know, the, the, the volunteer situation sounds good in theory, but it seems like that kind of structure is less appealing for the, for those types of volunteers to do that work, just because the way households and families are structured, that's, that's not quite as, as, as functional in our daily lives these days. So, you know, I, I think a volunteer situation sounds great, but if we can't get those volunteers and we can't keep those volunteers once they're, once they're trained, it, it, you know, it's great an idea only. But I don't know if Mr. Kennedy can speak to kind of the benefit of that three man team. And I know this is a different conversation, but my thing is, I really want to address the problem, not just say there's a problem and find a, a solution that's loosely related to it.
Right. I might suggest that we try to separate out these two conversations. And, you know, we are, we have the option tonight, and I haven't forgotten about you, Mr. Walters, we have the option tonight to go ahead and approve this document without, without the, the sprinkler part, and we could, we can amend it. We can take all the time we want to amend it and maybe, because I feel like we're in, we're having two different conversations, and it's a little confusing. Mr. Walters, go ahead.
I was going to reiterate some of those points. The staffing issue is not addressed by this change. The staffing issue remains whether we make this change or not. Obviously, this change helps fire protection because it's about sprinklers, and who could say no to a good sprinkler? But it doesn't help us resolve that issue. We can't change the level of service, as we heard in the planning committee, to address the issue. So we need to address that separately. So I definitely take Mayor Gear's point that we should separate these conversations. I cannot explain to a constituent right now what we would have done if we adopt this text as proposed. It's, you know, it's, it's nested because it's an amendment to an international code, and there's various provisions and hazard groups and occupancies. I, I, I do not have a good enough summary or background of it. So I would not feel comfortable voting for this right now, maybe later. But I propose that we put that section off and adopt the remainder of the changes to the building code so that we are in line with the state and using the latest version that everybody else is.
Mr. Miller?
If, if that was a motion, then I'd second it, which is removing the language on the sprinklers and adopting the building code.
Is that a motion, Mr. Walters?
Sure, third.
Okay. Any other discussion? So we have a motion by Mr. Walters and a second by Mr. Miller to approve ordinance 3081, but striking the automatic sprinkler system portion of that.
Mayor Gear?
Yes.
I wonder if Mr. Miesmer could describe how it would read now?
Perfect. Mr. Miesmer?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Walters? So essentially, we would strike section 903.2 entirely off of page 10.
So would that be consistent with what the code reads now? Does the code currently not have an amendment to 903.2?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, is that clear? So Marsha, could you read back what the motion will be?
The motion is to approve ordinance 3081, with the exception of striking section 903.2 on page 10.
So we have that motion on Mr. Walters, a second by Mr. Miller. Ms. Hunt, would you take the vote?
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. McDougall?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So and Jack Kennedy, thank you for your work on this, and the council really did hear you, and we will bring this and we will address it. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. At this time, we'll move on to item 5B. This is a contract award for wastewater treatment plant outfall project, design number 20-032 SEW 007. This is an action item. Mr. Buckhamire?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, staff is seeking consent to award a contract to HDR Engineering in the amount As, and before I get started too far, Eric Charbeck, our city engineers here this evening, if we have any detailed questions on, on the scope of this. But as Mayor and Council are aware, and has been discussed at the Public Works Committee several times, the city of Anacortes is proceeding ahead with the design and construction of a new wastewater treatment plant outfall. And in addition to that, associated improvements that will increase the discharge of treated and untreated combined sewage to that new outfall. So this scope of services covers the final design of the outfall and, including both of the onshore and offshore portions of the outfall. There's, as councils are aware, there's quite a bit of work that's done underwater on this one. And also a series of consultant, subconsultants, and that would work on this also. So scope of services is basically project management, survey, and base mapping, tactical services, outfall design. Their HDR is going to help a bit with permitting support, and then they're going to help with engineering services during construction. I think it's probably noteworthy to, to notice that the cost is about split of the 990,000, it's about split between HDR and all of the other consultants combined. The, all of the consultants combined is about 536,000, and HDR themselves is a little bit more than 450,000. So with that, if there's any questions?
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Young?
Given that there are no questions, I move that City Council authorize the mayor to sign contract 20-032 SEW. Give me one more second. SEW 007 with HDR Engineering in the amount of $991,523.18 to perform the wastewater treatment plant outfall design.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Young and a second by Mr. Miller. Ms. Hunt, would you take the vote?
Mr. Walters? Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. McDougall?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda this evening is item 5D, which is a contract award with Anchor QEA, master services agreement number 21-024-LEG-001. This is discussion with possible action, and Ms. Swetnam will do the presentation this evening. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. Appreciate the opportunity to come and bring this contract to you all for Anchor QEA. And, and I'm going to go through a little bit of backgrounds about Anchor, about the contract, but also the status of the two projects that are connected to the work under this contract. So I am going to share my screen here. Can you all see the slide deck?
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay, how about now?
Yes.
Okay, great. So again, this is Anchor QEA, and this is their master services agreement. So by way of background, Anchor QEA is a consultant with offices throughout the United States, including Bellingham and Seattle, and they are specialists in dealing with contaminated sites, including site investigation, remediation, decommissioning, decontamination, and demolition. The city has been working with Anchor QEA through Foster Garvey for, for several years now. They have been part of the team doing the investigation phase on the water treatment plant demolition site and have been supporting the city to, to date through the MACA process. So we're kind of at a, at a, you know, a pivot point in that water treatment plant demo process for two reasons. First, the attorneys that we've been working at, working with at Foster Garvey have moved to a new firm, and we will be moving with them to that new firm. So a lot of the structure that's been in place for the consultants that have supported the city is at a, a point where we can change it. And we're also switching gears from the investigation of the site and characterizing the site to the actual development of the cleanup and demolition process. So staff is recommending that rather than, than having our attorney's contract with Anchor QEA, we contract with them directly to support the city's effort on the water treatment plant cleanup and the A Avenue landfill sites. So the city is currently working with the Department of Ecology on two cleanup sites under the Model Toxic Control Act, MACA. And those two sites are the water, the former water treatment plant demolition, which has both a MACA cleanup component, but also a facility demolition component, and then now the new A Avenue landfill site. So the city is in the formal agreed order process on both sites, meaning that we've got to follow a formal process that's overseen by the Department of Ecology. And I just want to kind of as a side note, say that the, the goal of MACA, which is the, the world we're in now for these two sites, is to direct the investigation and cleanup of sites that are contaminated by hazardous substances in Washington. So because we're going to be kind of talking about this through the discussion of the scope of work, I thought I'd just give you this overview of the agreed order process. So it starts with the discovery and initial investigation of whatever the contaminants are. Next, there's, there's a possibility of a site hazard assessment process. The, the remedial investigation comes next, and that's really when the consultant digs in and investigates the site, does testing, tries to really understand the nature and extent of whatever the contamination is. Next step is a feasibility study, and in the feasibility study, you look at options for how to contain and remediate whatever the contaminations are, and really dive into the details of how each of those options would and could address the contamination, costs associated with that, how do we reach MACA cleanup levels, et cetera, et cetera. the contamination, costs associated with that, how do we reach M A T C A cleanup levels, et cetera, et cetera. The next phase then with that information is to develop a cleanup action plan, and that's done hand in hand with Ecology to identify what the best path forward is to deal with the contamination. Then, once the cleanup action plan is adopted, there's engineering and design of that, of whatever the solution is in the plan, and then the site gets cleaned up, and there is post-monitoring and site use controls. So that's the general overview. But some key background on the two sites that are governed by this contract. So first of all, the A Avenue landfill site, we're much earlier in the process than we are on the water treatment plant. So Ecology issued a no further action letter for this site back in May of two thousand and nine. It's a known landfill, and the no further action letter directed that this, the county, as kind of a deputy of Ecology, would monitor the site for the following ten years. And they've done that with the city's, with the city's participation. Ecology received a concern from the member of the public on September ninth of two thousand and twenty about potential contamination. And when they looked into it, they determined that there was some petroleum hits in the area that the county did some subsequent testing on. So the Department of Ecology rescinded the no further action letter in January of two thousand and twenty. Now, the key point here is that landfills, there is a streamlined process provided for by the Department of Ecology called the voluntary cleanup process that is, that's where a known owner of a contaminated site can say, hey, we're going to volunteer to go through this cleanup process, accept responsibility for that, and the upside is that there is a little bit of a streamline in the process and public participation component.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Mr. Walters?
Darcy keeps, her volume keeps going in and out. I'm wondering if there's anything obvious she can do about that?
Oh.
Yeah, let me. I don't see anything obvious. My volume is turned all the way up, but please stop me if you can't hear me. I've got a web camera on my, on my computer screen, but I'll try to speak closer and louder. Is that a little better?
A little better, yep.
Okay, thank you for that, Mr. Walters. So the voluntary cleanup process is optional in some types of sites, but landfills are not eligible for this voluntary cleanup process. So the city has to go through the full agreed order process with the full amount of public participation and procedure to evaluate and move forward on the site. On the former water treatment plant site, if things, again, the city, there was the possibility of the voluntary cleanup process, but the city opted to do the full agreed order on that site because of the built-in public participation and transparency that's there in the full agreed order process that isn't as, as much a part of the voluntary cleanup process. So I want to, I want to also clarify that the former water treatment plant has kind of two components to it. One is the M A T C A cleanup process, which governs the cleanup of the soils that are contaminated around the periphery of the old buildings. So there are these old buildings. The contaminants were found in the coating of the buildings, and some of that had shipped off over the years and was in the soil around the building. So that's really the M A T C A piece of it. But then there's also a separate project that is not governed by the Department of Ecology, and that's the demolition of the old site. So what that looks like is, you know, removing the contaminated coating off of the exterior and interior of the building, wherever those contaminants are, disposing of those at a hazardous waste landfill, and then, once we get the remaining clean concrete, then disposing of that at a separate landfill. So that's a much bigger project than the M A T C A piece on the former water treatment plant. So moving on to just give you a status of where each of these sites are. So the A Avenue landfill site, and this is the same graphic along the bottom here that I showed you before, but just some visuals so you can see kind of where we are on the timeline. So on January eleventh of this year, so just a couple weeks ago, Ecology made a determination that the city is a potentially liable person for the contaminants on the site. And so we're in the process of working with Ecology to negotiate an agreed order. And the agreed order is basically a document that both the city and the Department of Ecology sign off on that lays out the process and logistics for moving the site through these steps. You know, it covers things like what, you know, what will be the documents that the city will have to produce? What kind of public participation will the city make sure happens? What kind of access will the site manager have to the site, et cetera, et cetera? So it's really the game plan for how we'll move through this process with the Department of Ecology. So we're, you know, kind of here at the initial investigation phase, and so we're really just getting started with the A Avenue site. So the status of the former water treatment plant site is much farther along in the process. The city has already negotiated the agreed order with the Department of Ecology several years ago, and that's laid out the process which we've been following for the M A T C A cleanup work. So the city has completed this remedial investigation, and we've also completed the feasibility study. Both of those documents are available on the website that was set up for the site called Safe and Clean Water dot org. And there is a link to that website on the city's website in the Public Works Department. So right now, the city is working with Ecology on the draft cleanup action plan. So we prepare the plan, send it to Ecology, they provide feedback, and really the parties engage in a discussion of what that cleanup action plan needs to include. The hope here is to have that finalized by the end of February, so by the end of next month. There's been a significant amount of work that's already happened on that. We are also working with Ecology on the draft consent decree. So once we get to the end of the process, there's a consent decree that's signed off on by both parties, and it really just kind of wraps up the process, establishes that the city's followed processes that it was required to under the agreed order, and it lays out any, you know, follow-up monitoring on the site. So that's where that site is. So just to give you a sense of what the contract structure looks like here, we have a master services agreement that's in your packet. I have reviewed the master services agreement, and we also had our attorneys at Foster Garvey look at it because it's a significant agreement. And we negotiated some of the terms and believe that it is consistent with standard provisions that we generally would look for in city contracts. And then, under the master services agreement, there are two separate task orders. The first task order is to have Anchor Q E A provide support on the A Avenue landfill site for the M A T C A process. And those specific tasks, which are outlined and described in the packet materials, but generally include communications and meetings, compilation and review of historical site information. So in this case, you know, we know it was a landfill site. Before we start just, you know, doing random testing out there, we want to go back and look at what historical documents are out there about what was disposed of at the site, you know, whether there were other parties that dumped things there that they may need to be responsible for, et cetera, et cetera. Then we'll be looking at having them do a data gap evaluation for us and a remedial investigation work plan development. Sorry, my light went off here. So that will kind of give us a sense of what, you know, what testing needs to be done to characterize the site. And I know I've mentioned this before, but just to give you a sense of what the scope, you know, can look like on some of these sites. For the water treatment plant, the remedial investigation that we submitted to Ecology was fourteen hundred pages. So it's really a lot of detailed work. We don't think that it will be as big of an undertaking for this site as it was for the water treatment plant, but this is not a, you know, it's not a ten-page report that gets submitted. And then we would look for their support on developing the agreed order. The cost for that task order is eighty-seven thousand, five hundred. The second task order under this, under this agreement that we're recommending we move forward with is on the former water treatment plant site.
Mayor Gear, if I could just ask one quick question. Ms. Swetnam, Ms. Swetnam, is this, are these fixed costs associated with each of these phases? Or is it a running cost, if you know what I'm asking?
Yeah, good question. It's not a fixed price contract. It's a, it's an estimate based on the work that they're going to do with, with, you know, they put in their billable rates, so, you know, they think it will take X number of hours for, you know, people at different billing rates to do these things. But, but I believe it's not to exceed, and, you know, our work with them to date has been really great that, you know, when they tell us it's going to cost this much, that's how much it costs, and certainly, you know, don't, don't go beyond the average, the amount in the contract unless, you know, we do a modification. So thank you for clarifying that. So the second task order is the water treatment plant site, and it's for both the M A T C A process, but also the demolition implementation and technical services. So the tasks anticipated under that task order are project management and meetings, pre-construction material characterization, M A T C A cleanup work plans and design, demolition design, permitting, on-call support, and draft cleanup action plan finalization and public participation support. The price tag for this one is three hundred and seventy thousand and nine hundred dollars. So it's a significant amount of work. I just wanted to share a couple of the challenges with the second task order, just to give you a sense of why the price tag is what it is on this one. Part of what has to happen is obviously we have to do a cleanup of the contaminated soils under M A T C A, but we've also got to then come up with a plan for demolishing the old building that we know has contamination because of the building materials that were used at the time that that facility was constructed. So we know that at least some of those materials will have to go to a hazardous waste landfill, which are very expensive to send materials to. So if we were to just box up the entirety of the old plant and send it to a hazardous materials landfill, it would be, we're told that it would be ungodly expensive. So it's really worth being thoughtful about how we demolish those buildings by figuring out how much of the contaminated materials need to be scored off of the outside of the buildings, and just those materials that are hazardous need to be sent to the hazardous materials landfill with the rest of it to be contained and disposed of in other ways. Another complication is that this site is adjacent to the, to the existing water treatment plant. And part of that structure under the new plant is, is open and open clear well. So as we go through the demolition process on the old site, we have to be really careful to make sure that, you know, the site needs to be tented so that dust with contaminants in it doesn't touch the clean water. So there's just a lot of, there's a lot of care that needs to be taken because of the site and because of its adjacency to the functioning water treatment plant. So staff is recommending that we move forward with this agreement. I'll tell you that we did look at other consultants when we first started working with Anchor. They were, they were the standouts, both in terms of efficiency and their pricing structure and they're local. We had worked with another consultant doing similar work for a while, but they were out of state. And so it was costing the city more money to, for travel costs and those types of things. Since we've worked with Anchor, we've been very happy with the pace that they've moved this project along. They do a really great job of giving us timeframes and meeting those timeframes, and so we've made significant progress through the agreed order process since we've been working with Anchor. I can't say enough how great and efficient they've been to work with. So with that, staff is recommending approval of this contract. I believe Fred said that he was going to stick around, Mr. Buckamire. He's been involved in this as well, and we are happy to answer any questions that you have.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Miller?
Yeah, thank you for that last slide because I had to kind of dig around the agenda bill. Didn't have the costs in there. So my biggest question is, often is, is the budget, budget impact. Where is this money coming from? My guess for the water treatment plant, I'm glad Mr. Buckamire is still on there. My guess is that's coming out of water treatment plant funds, and then the eighty-seven five, I have no idea. I don't, I don't even venture to guess where that.
Solid waste, I think. Is that correct, Mr. Buckamire?
That's correct, yeah. The water plant's coming out of the water budget, and it's a regionally funded project, so it's born.
Yeah, that, that seemed pretty straightforward, and have we budgeted for either one of these or both of these? Because it was somewhat unclear.
Yeah, the other one's solid waste, and we have put funding in the twenty-twenty-one budget for the A Avenue landfill site.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Walters?
I assume it's safe to say that we haven't planned for this ninety thousand dollars in M A T C A support for the A Avenue landfill site when we put together the solid waste rates most recently?
That's correct.
Let alone what might come out of this?
That's correct, yeah. Until we know exactly what the, what the dollars are, what the final cleanup cost will be, it's hard to predict what, what impact that'll have on the solid waste budget.
Mr. Buckamire, just for the council and the public, what years was the A Avenue landfill used as a city dump? Can you give us a historical perspective?
Let me see, back in the sixties, but let me see. Yeah, from, anywhere from the nineteen sixties to, I think, the last thing that we was in, there was two thousand and six.
A long time, okay.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Mr. Walters?
I did not find a total not to exceed in the contract. Is, is that something we just don't have in this agreement?
Doris, can you answer that?
I can. I'm going to stop sharing here. Yeah, we've got a, we've got, you know, it, so, so I misspoke. It's not a not to exceed amount, but it's a, it's an estimate based on time and materials. And they, they commit in the contract, and our experience has been that they've done this really consistently throughout. If there are any changes to that, and we put in a ten percent overage, which is pretty standard, I think, in contracts. So if they go beyond ten percent, beyond the estimated amount, then they'll communicate with us. But our experience has been if they're getting even close to it, they've been really open and having good discussions with us about whether we need to change what we're doing, or do we need to issue, you know, some kind of a modification?
Yeah, I guess the functional difference between what's presented and a version that would have a not to exceed amount is that if they go beyond the budget, they have to notify staff versus having to notify council and getting council approval on an amendment to go beyond a not to exceed amount, which is why I think I would be in favor of that as a, as a general rule, including a total not to exceed. So that we know precisely what we're getting into and can be assured that we'll get the chance to edit it again if a consultant ends up going beyond that amount, especially on this particular project.
Yeah, I don't think that's an unreasonable ask, and if council would feel more comfortable with that, I would say if you go ahead and authorize the mayor to sign with that change. And then if, if that's not acceptable to them, we can always bring it back next week.
Yeah, would a, a total, a total not to exceed of the sum of the two task assignments be sufficient, or that plus ten percent?
I mean, I think, I think it's whatever council is comfortable with. I mean, I'm sure that they would rather see that plus ten percent, but I think everybody understands that these are important projects, and this is an important contract. So if you'd like to keep it at the, at the. So if we'd like to keep it at the estimated amount, that's fine. And then, we'll come back if we, you know, if there needs to be a modification, we'll come back to council for that.
Well, I definitely think that that is reasonable and prudent for us to do. So, just to lay that then on the table here for discussion, I move that we approve the contract, or, let me rephrase. I move that we authorize the mayor to sign the contract as presented with the addition of a total not to exceed amount in the amount of the sum of the two task items.
I see a lot ahead now.
Second.
The second by Mr. Miller. So Dorsey, do you want to reread what the motion would be?
Sure. So, what I heard from Mr. Walters was a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the Anchor QEA master services agreement as presented with the addition of a total not to exceed amount of $458,400.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any questions? Ms. Hunt, would you take the vote?
Ms. Clela McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item this evening is item 5E. It's Resolution 3014. It's our legislative priorities. And Emily's going to make the presentation. The one thing that we did, and I want to just mention this before she speaks, is we heard from our legislators to only bring forward things that they are, they're already in the queue this year. They don't have time, they have no bandwidth to take on any new projects. So we stayed within bills that were already being worked on. So that's why you have the list you have before you. So, Ms. Emily, would you go ahead and make your presentation?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. In regard to the legislative priorities this year, I thought I'd provide just a little bit of background information. So, in 2021, the legislature will be in session from January 11th through April 25th. And they always start on the second Monday in January, but in odd-numbered years, when they're working on the state budget, they meet for 105 days. And in even-numbered years, they meet for 60 days. So just some information that I found interesting. This year, the legislation, the legislative session will be very different in regard to the pandemic. All the proceedings will occur remotely during the session. And so, we received information and requests, as Mayor Gear mentioned, about trying to be very simple in what we're bringing forward in terms of our legislative priorities. And so we looked to the Association of Washington Cities in putting those together. The other thing that we hear on a regular basis is that the legislators really like for us to tie our priorities to specific bills that are coming through the system. So I look forward to just having the conversation with you about the proposed priorities. And if there's changes that you'd like to make, we're happy to do that. But we wanted to get something in front of you. So let me go ahead and share my screen. So these are the legislative priorities. We started with just general principles and that our legislation, that we're supporting legislation to promote the city council's goals and to protect the city's ability to provide basic services for our citizens. And there are three tenants of that. We're looking to protect shared state revenue sources that are available to the city and also to provide new revenue options and flexibility in the use of the existing revenues. We support long-term sustainability efforts related to the city's financial, environmental, and transportation goals. And we support re-establishing the partnership between the cities and the state to ensure that the critical mandates are funded and vital services are provided to all the residents of the state. So those are general principles that we have put together. And then, our specific legislative priorities, there are four. There are shared state revenues, housing stability assistance, transportation revenue package, and then fiscal flexibility. And then, you know, I don't want to just take the time to, you know, I don't want to take time. I don't think it's helpful for me just to read them to you, but I would be very happy to have a conversation if you have any feedback on either of these, any of these. There are two bills that we have specifically identified under the housing stability assistance. One is Senate Bill 5012, which is Senator Levlett's bill on short-term rental tax. And House Bill 1035, that provides tax exemptions for affordable housing. There are many bills that are right now in front of the legislature that are moving through the system that are related to housing stability assistance. The, there is a shared revenue bill that just passed out of committee. That's House Bill 1069, that is intended to create some additional flexibility to better provide essential services for communities. That may be one that we might want to include under fiscal flexibility. But I didn't know if there are other bills that you would like to refer to as part of our legislative priorities. So I will stop talking and just open the floor to your questions and suggestions.
Mayor Gear.
Okay, I heard Mr. Young first, and then was it Mr. McDougal next?
Miller.
Miller, okay. Mr. Young and Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mayor Gear. Ms. Shu, you know, in reading over these, I think that, you know, really, it begins to address what we're looking for and what we would need to address. There's been a lot of discussion about short-term rentals and how we begin to address that. And, you know, I had a similar conversation with our representatives about where do we go from here. What might be also helpful for us, given as a council, is that any of the information you might have concerning bills that are before the legislature that are important to us, it would be good if we could just sort of see it. I know we've got a lot of stuff that we're already reading, but it just sort of keeps us abreast of things that we're watching and what we might think is important. Or, if you were to just sort of link us to some things that we're watching as a city or as cities in the legislature, because then that way, it allows us to be able to talk about its specific bills and how we think its impact may be on us and make suggestions for that. But overall, I think this is great. My only concern that I'm always an advocate for is small businesses because we are technically a town or a small city. And it's been a hard impact for small businesses trying to figure out how they move forward. So anything in any of these priorities to help, that would be of great benefit because they're looking for ways to move forward and they really need the help. So I didn't want them to get lost in the bigger picture as well as trying to get to the nitty-gritty of saying, hey, how do we help these small businesses? Thank you.
Mr. Young, or Mayor Gear. So the Association of Washington Cities puts out a legislative bulletin during the legislative session on a weekly basis. And that's something that I can send you a link to so that you can sign up, so that you can receive those weekly updates. It's about 25 pages, just as a digest of what has occurred over the past week.
Thank you. I'd appreciate it too. You know, it may just be non-read, but every once in a while, I do want to look in and see what's happening. We rely upon you to tell us what's important to us well. Thank you.
Mr. Miller.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm generally supportive of the legislative priorities, general principles, and legislative priorities. In spite of what the legislators say, I am generally not supportive of getting behind individual legislation because I particularly do not support Senate Bill 5012 or House Bill 1035. And, you know, we could go into it. I've actually read the bills. But it's generally, I don't think we've done that. Maybe on a very rare occasion as a council, we've done this very specific bills. Again, I get it. My former council member would love us to get on board with one of her bills, but I'm not on board with that particular bill for a lot of reasons, having read through it. But, so other than that, I'm generally supportive of the legislative priorities as presented.
Okay, okay. So if we remove the actual bill numbers?
Absolutely. There's other legislation that addresses that as well. And, you know, that's their job to meet that out, hopefully in a bipartisan manner.
Yep, thank you.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Walters.
I agree with Mr. Miller with respect to the question of removing the particular bills, especially this early in the legislative session. They might evolve quite a bit. And I haven't evaluated them individually. There is a different bill, HB 1329, that I find really interesting. It has some aspects that maybe I wouldn't support, but one of its primary features is that it would require local governments, not just cities, but including cities, to offer remote participation in meetings even after the pandemic. And not just of members of the board or council or commission, but from the public. I think that that would be a great benefit to the people of the state of Washington. And so I hope something like that passes in this session because we've demonstrated we can do it in the pandemic.
Right.
I don't think we need to put it in our legislative priorities, though. I think what's here is pretty good. I don't maybe know too much about the merits of some of the individual shared revenue provisions in the first item. But I think it's good enough for us for now, especially how important it is to get this out into our legislators earlier rather than later.
Thank you.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. McDougal.
Yeah, I also agree with Mr. Miller and Mr. Walters on the, we don't need to name specific bills. I do like the overall, the priorities and the guiding principles sort of at the top as well. I'm especially a big fan of housing stability assistance and the fiscal flexibility. You know, we find that, like, any given city is going to have a different mix of sort of like key areas of cost and different kinds, different mixes of revenue as well. And the fact that there's, we're really kind of a little bit over-regulated in how we're able to approach our own, you know, fiscal capabilities. So, definitely a big supporter of those. So thank you for putting together this list. It's nice and crisp as well.
Thank you. Any other comments? So, what would you like to do with this if we don't have any more discussion?
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Walters.
And while I'm open to supporting a particular bill if it needs our support for some reason and we evaluate it individually, I propose that we adopt the resolution as presented with the deletion of that final line in the housing stability assistance section.
Second.
All right. Any other discussion? So the motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Mr. Miller, to approve the legislative priorities as written with the deletion of the House and Senate bills listed. Ms. Hunt, would you take the vote?
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Clela McGrath?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Well, at this time, unless there's anything else for the good of the order, I'm going to adjourn tonight's meeting. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Members of the audience, and Chief Gans. Thank you for joining us, and we'll see you all next week. Good night.